Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Newton County Board of Education meeting this day of September 11th. This time, I would like for everyone to bow your heads in silence for an event that took place when our country was attacked by terrorists. So if you would, bow your heads, please. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vera, I understand we have some special recognition?
Indeed, we do. Mr. Turner, good evening. Tonight, we have several middle and high school students in attendance who deserve to be publicly recognized for their recent outstanding accomplishments. First, we will continue with our recognition of our 2018 AP Scholars. Overall, 127 Newton County School System high school students were named AP Scholars for their outstanding success on their AP exams last year. While many of those were graduates of the class of 2018, we had a record number of sophomores and juniors earn this prestigious recognition as well, so many that we've had to spread the recognition across three meetings to accommodate all of them, and certainly, that's a wonderful problem to have. Tonight, we will recognize our 2018 AP Scholars from Alcovee and Newton High School. In order to earn AP Scholar status, students must complete three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mr. Turner, Chair of the Newton County Board of Education. First, William Jordan. And William is not here this evening, but he is a senior at Alcovee High School and a 2018 AP Scholar. I'd like to congratulate William Jordan. Sherry, we didn't do the phonemic pronunciations on some of these, and I do not want to mess up this person's name. So would you tell me your name?
Von Gai Mutte.
Right. Von Gai Mutte. And so, I wanted to make sure we said that correctly. I have one of those last names where they mess it up all the time. So Von Gai Mutte. Von Gai is a senior at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and she earned AP Scholar status in 2018. Congratulations, Von Gai. Allison Mowat. Allison is a 12th grade student at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and she too is named a 2018 AP Scholar. Congratulations to Allison. Bradley Piper. Bradley is a senior at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and he earned AP Scholar status as well. Congratulations to Bradley. Connor Jessup. Connor is a junior at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and he was named a 2018 AP Scholar. Congratulations to Connor. Jasmine Houston. Jasmine is a senior at Newton High School and a 2018 AP Scholar. Anthony Reiser. Anthony is a 12th grade student at Newton High School, and he was named a 2018 AP Scholar. Congratulations to Anthony. Kai Rivers. Kai is a senior at Newton High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and she is a 2018 AP Scholar. Lancy Ruff. Lancy is a 12th grade student at Newton High School and a 2018 AP Scholar. And that, you are right on time. Look at that. Shelby Strickland. Shelby is a senior at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School, and she is a 2018 AP Scholar. Congratulations to Shelby. Abel Triana. Abel is a 12th grade student at Newton High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, and he is a 2018 AP Scholar as well. At this time, I'd like to congratulate our Alcovee and Newton High School AP Scholars one more time. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the administrators who are here tonight to support their students. Thank you, Dr. Owens and Mr. Walker. We appreciate you. Next, we'll recognize a very intelligent group of 8th grade students who have earned recognition in the 2018 Duke University Talent Identification Program, better known as Duke TIP. This year, five Newton County School System students qualified for state recognition in Duke TIP for their performance on either the SAT or the ACT last school year while they were enrolled in 7th grade. So that's correct. They were in 7th grade, and they took the SAT and/or the ACT, so a college entrance exam in the 7th grade. They also qualified for either the Duke TIP Academy for Summer Studies, the Duke TIP Center for Summer Studies, or the Duke TIP E-Studies Program. Each year, 7th grade students in Duke University's 16 State Talent Search Region are selected to participate in this prestigious program. School counselors, teachers, and administrators help Duke University identify academically talented students for consideration. Once their application is approved, the students are given the opportunity to either take the SAT or ACT college entrance exam. In order to receive state-level recognition, students must meet one of the following criteria. Students taking the ACT must score 22 or greater on English, Math, or Science, or a 23 or greater on the ACT reading test. Students taking the SAT must score 540 or greater on Math, or 550 or greater on evidence-based reading and writing. Keep in mind that these are very good scores for juniors or seniors. However, the students here tonight excelled on these college entrance exams as 7th grade students. Imagine what their scores will be when they take these college entrance exams in high school. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Abigail Grillo. Abigail is an 8th grade student at Clements Middle School, and she earned state recognition in the Duke TIP Program with her outstanding performance on the science portion of the ACT. In addition to her state recognition, Abigail also qualified for both the Duke TIP E-Studies Program and the Academy for Summer Studies. Congratulations to Abigail. Kiana James. Kiana is an 8th grade student at Cousins Middle School, and she earned state recognition in the Duke TIP Program as a result of her excellent performance on the evidence-based writing and reading portion of the SAT. She also qualified for both the Duke TIP E-Studies Program and the Center for Summer Studies. Austin Farmer. Austin is an 8th grade student at Indian Creek Middle School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke TIP Program as a result of his outstanding performance on both the English and reading portions of the ACT. In addition to state recognition, Austin also qualified for both the Duke TIP E-Studies Program and the Center for Summer Studies. Congratulations, Austin. Ashley Pope. Ashley is an 8th grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she earned state recognition as a result of her excellent performance on the evidence-based reading and writing portion of the SAT. In addition to state recognition, she also qualified for both the Duke TIP E-Studies Program and the Academy for Summer Studies. Congratulations to Ashley. And while you are still clapping, let's clap for them one more time for their awesome And finally, I would like to take a moment to thank the school administrators who are here in attendance this evening, who are supporting their middle school students. So Mr. Das Two from Indian Creek Middle School, Mr. Fred Richard from Clements Middle School, and I don't see, don't know if anybody else is here, but definitely want to thank them for their support. I did see Dr. Buff from Newton High School slip in there as well, and we do appreciate the hard work of our school leadership as they set the climate and conditions for students to be able to achieve all that they can achieve. So thank you for being here. Mr. Turner, this concludes our recognition for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. If the, all the parents, grandparents, and brothers and sisters, if y'all please stand On behalf of Ms. Vera Superintendent of the Board of Education, also the Newton County Board members, we'd like to thank you for your support that you've given these students, providing them with the necessary tools and equipment to make them great leaders for our future. So we'd like to give you a round of applause. Now, we've come to a part of our meeting that we will allow you the opportunity to leave if you'd like, but if you wish, you may stay for the remaining of our meeting. Ms. Vera, I understand we have no public participation at this time?
That's correct. We do not.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Superintendent's report, financial report. Mr. Barr?
Good evening. Just a few items to note in the financial report. The special purpose local option for sales, for education sales tax for July, the distribution was $1,057,760, which is a decrease of $5,516 from the previous month. The average for the first 42 months of East Pla's Four Collections is $943,976. Item two, the title Ad Valorem Tax Collection for July was $77,688. And finally, the final ending fund balance for fiscal year 2018 will be available in October, in the process of finalizing the expenditures for that fiscal year and waiting for receipt of final payments from the Tax Commissioner's Office. And that concludes the financial report.
Thank you. Mr. Roundtree, item B.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to present some items from the superintendent's report. During the month of August, elementary teachers and elementary instructional coaches participated in professional development on best practices for formatively assessing students before, during, and after science lessons. Teachers learn more about Page-Keeley probes, which are included in the newly adopted Inspire Science textbook materials for kindergarten through 5th grade. Page-Keeley probes are one tool teachers use to reveal students' scientific misconceptions so that teachers are able to plan and adapt instruction in order to improve student learning and move students closer to conceptual understanding. Continuing with that theme of science, the kickoff for this year's Science Fair occurred in a regional meeting at Griffin Risa on August 23rd, 2018, and in a district meeting on August 30th, 2018, at the Board of Education offices. A science leader from each secondary school participated and received updates, rules, and guidelines for preparing for this year's anticipated school, district, and regional competitions. The Science and Engineering Fair for Newton County Schools is scheduled for December 15th, 2018, and winners will compete at the Regional Science and Engineering Fair at Griffin Risa in January 2019. Those were items from the strategic plan that relate to student achievement and success. As it relates to high-quality workforce, the Human Resources Department staff identified teacher engagement strategies to assist with teacher retention and collaborated with teach upbeat to provide professional development. On August 29th, 2018, administrators from the Central Office and school principals attended two half-day workshops to address teacher engagement and retention, creating meetings at work, and parent-teacher communication. The Technology Department staff collaborated with school principals and school-based technology leaders to support a growth mindset in students, emphasizing future-ready skills at the Second Annual IOT, which stands for Innovative Leaders of Tomorrow Boot Camp, on August 30th, 2018. The Innovative Leader of Tomorrow program helps prepare a high-quality workforce in Newton County by training teachers to transform teaching and learning. The program promotes lifelong learning as essential in a diverse and changing world. The IOT program empowers learners to amplify student voice using technology tools and resources. As the plan relates to culture, climate, and communication, during the month of August, Dr. Wonder Williams, Secondary Special Education Instructional Coach, conducted workshops at Alcovee, Eastside, and Newton High Schools. The workshops focused on building positive relationships among the special education staff. Building positive relationships will increase communication and create a positive work environment. Strategies were also provided to develop relationships with other staff in their respective schools. Kim Reed, District Homeless and Foster Care Liaison, presented at the School Nutrition Managers Meeting and School Counselors Meeting Training Session on the McKinney-Vento Education of Homeless Children and Youth Assistance Act during August. The counselors participated in an activity called Move It! to increase the awareness of the effects of experiences of homelessness on students and families. Information was shared on how to provide support to children in need and to help identify possible homeless situations. Ms. Reed continues to provide assistance to all schools with any homeless and foster care concerns. Finally, organizational and operational effectiveness. The Procurement Department was awarded the 23rd Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award by, for 2018 from the National Purchasing Institute. The award recognizes excellence in procurement by measuring organizations against standardized benchmarks that represent best practices within the profession. The Newton County School System of one of just six school systems in Georgia and one of only 26 school systems throughout the United States and Canada to receive the award for 2018. This is the seventh consecutive year the Procurement Department has earned the AEP Award. And finally, all custodians are required to complete post-employment training modules on topics including cleaning methods, equipment, and chemicals. Currently, 97% of all custodians have completed the training courses. The training courses are scheduled periodically to allow newly-employed custodians to receive the necessary training. The next class is scheduled for early September. The enrollment report. September 2018 enrollment is, is an increase, I'm sorry, the, you know, I got this wrong last month, so maybe the next month I'll get it right. Right now, we have 19,746 students enroll. This enrollment is an increase of 117 students from September of 2017. And that concludes both those reports. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a 21st Century Learning presentation by Mr. Dana Sams.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the 2017-18 21st Century results as it comes up. So you'll be seeing a lot of numbers, so bear with me. Also included, a couple of photos of our student activities, so hopefully, you'll enjoy those as well. All right. So this is just to show you that we are in full alignment with our district's strategic plan. We are, our mission, of course, is to make sure that we provide educational excellence for all students. So all that we do in our work is in alignment with the district's plan. Our target group, let me first say the statement that's there. Kids come from loving homes, come to school to learn. Kids who don't come to school, don't come to school. Kids who don't come to school to be loved. Kids who don't come from loving homes come to school to be loved. So that is our mantra in, after school. And I put that there so that you know the target group that we work with tends to have what some refer to as at-risk factors. We certainly are targeting students who are behind for various reasons. They are either, did not meet the standards on our state standardized test. They are behind and in need of remediation or credit recovery. They have been retained due to attendance or academics. Other at-risk factors, such as our homeless students, students who are exhibiting disruptive behavior. So a lot of those behaviors that are, those factors are part of the student population that we target with our 21st Century Grant. And then finally, we focus on increasing parent engagement. Here are our demographics, and I am reporting on five grants. So the demographics of each grant are similar. We are targeted to serve 150 students by, per grant. We exceeded that number in each and every grant. For all of our grants, our population was about 50/50 in terms of male/female. The majority of the students served have been African-American students. That varies a little bit according to the school population. And then, the majority of our students are on free reduced lunch. Program activities. We seek to improve performance in core academic areas. We definitely want to see some changes in their behavior, in their attendance, in their work habits. We also focus on providing them enrichment activities. We want them to be, have that exposure to opportunities that they ordinarily might not have. So we do that through various enrichment classes as well as field trips. And then finally, again, we focus on supporting our families. So here are our FY '18 results. Our goal, our first goal is to improve academic performance of students in reading, English Language Arts, mathematics, and science. And so our measurable objectives come from grades, test scores, and then credit recovery results. So by grant, you'll see our results there. ASAP I is Portedale, Middle Ridge, and Newton High School. ASAP II is Indian Creek, West Newton, and Washington Street Community Center. ASAP III is Eastside High School, Flint Hill, and Fairview. ASAP V is Clements, Liberty Middle School, and Alcovee High School. And then finally, ASAP VI is Cousins, Heard, Nixon, and Veterans. So for each of these objectives, you can see that we met them by the numbers that you see shown there. We were in the mid-60s, which exceeded our measurable objective at 50%. So we, I think, did pretty well in, given the student population that we serve, in meeting our objectives. We did have a few challenges with our science objectives, as we did last year, and that is primarily because our sample size is small. So we might have had five 5th graders that tested. And so, it just depends on the number of students, since we're only testing in three, five, and eight for science. So our sample size in after-school is very small. And so, but we did have three schools that met that objective and two that, that did not. And so, we're certainly going to keep our eye on that objective to make sure that we try to just provide more support in, in the area of science. Our high schools did really well. Also, phenomenal job. Hats off to Eastside High School, who had all of their students to recover the credits that they were seeking. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out as well. Our second goal is to develop responsibility, appropriate behavior, and work habits with our students, and this one is measured by our day teachers. And so, these are teachers that do not work for the after-school program. These are the students' day teachers. So they're given a survey, and then they give us feedback as to what they're seeing because our belief is that what we're doing in after-school should translate back to, what the students are doing in after-school should translate back to the day class. And so, we want the teachers to let us know if, or if that's happening or not. And so, you see there, the first objective is looking at homework completion and is it, if it's accepted. So are they turning it in? And is it complete? Is it acceptable to the student, to the teacher? The second one is looking at behavior. We want to make sure that our students are, I'm sorry, the next one is looking at participation. And we want to make sure that the teach, the students are participating in class. Again, if they're coming to after-school, they're catching up, they're feeling a little bit better about themselves. We hope to see more participation in class. We hope to see better behavior in the class. And so, our third objective looks at exactly that. We're looking at the behavior to see if there's a difference once they go back to class. Our third goal is looking at student, giving students an opportunity to provide, to participate in a variety of enrichment activities, and this is one that is measured by the students. The students are actually providing our evaluator feedback here in, by way of survey. And so, we want them to tell them, as a, tell us, as a result of participating in our enrichment activities and our field trips, are, do you have a better appreciation for the arts? And are you seeing that you're more fit as, as a result of being a part of our PE classes and our fitness classes? And so, the students, again, scored us really high in that area. One of the things that we try to do is make sure that we give them a variety. So you'll see, you know, karate here, piano here. You'll see a lot of different things happening in after-school, foreign language. So we try not to stick to just the traditional music and art. We really want to give them a variety of things to experience. And then, our second objective is looking at, the first one is looking at the increased appreciation for the things that interest them, and then the second one is looking at just making sure that they have an opportunity to participate in those things. And then, the fourth goal is looking at our parent objectives, and our parents are giving a survey here where they are to give us their feedback. We had, for our older grants, we actually had an objective that we wanted to see parents volunteering more, again, trying to do more to get them in the building, to get them interacting with the students, participating in the program, understanding what the program is about. And so, we looked at them volunteering, and we asked that they volunteer at least on two different occasions. And, and so, we did have our parents that met those objectives for ASAP I, II, and III. And then, the second was looking at their attendance. So we offer the workshops, and that could be some of the Title I workshops. It could be some other workshops that we offer to try to increase parents' education on different subjects. So not everything would be academic. We may be talking about budgeting. We may be talking about credit repair. But again, it's to help parents have life skills and to increase their life skills as well as the students. So there are a variety of classes that are offered, and we want to make sure that our parents attend at least two of those offerings. And then, the final one, we want feedback from the parents to tell us, as a result of coming to our classes, have these been valuable for you? classes, have these been valuable for you? Are you able to better work with your child at home as a result of coming to our math workshops or our test-taking workshops? Tell us, are you seeing, or do you feel more comfortable being able to work with your child at home and having some strategies to be able to work with them at home? And so our parents scored real high in, in providing us the feedback that our workshops were very valuable for them. And then our evaluator gave us some recommendations, and the first one is to improve emphasis on staff development on, in the area of science. So he wants us to keep our eye on that science instruction, just continue to make sure that we're implementing more science in our program and being intentional about making sure it's aligned to what will be on the test. So we have a lot of STEM activities going on, but we want to make sure that it is, these are things that are going to be tested and that our students are prepared. And then the next one is integrate academic content with physical activity, and that's one that you see every year. He's a kinesiologist, and he wants to make sure that the kids are up moving. And then explore alternative scheduling to keep interest in the program. So he just wants to make sure that every semester we change up some things so that it keeps the interest there for the kids and we don't come, become routine in our program. And we want to make sure we kind of mix it up some. And then continue to use, continue use of hands-on learning. Just again, making sure that what we're doing in after-school is just not more sit-and-get. We want the kids to be interacting. We want them to be moving. And so just continue to do that. He commented that. He saw a lot of that in our program, and he just wants us to continue doing that. And there's our evaluator's information. And questions?
Go ahead.
So, Ms. Sams, I have a question. It looks like on the slide, I think it was like your second slide.
Mm-hmm.
I remember at one time, it was difficult. We didn't get like a good review on our high schools taking those kids out for field trips, because that wasn't a requirement of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
But on your second slide, it looked like you had, I think it's the young man that teaches at Al Covey, so with a group of kids on that one. So now are the high schools, are they doing much better in that area?
Yeah, the, the high schools have done a phenomenal job of increasing the number of field trips they had. Actually, it was, the, the information came, it was about a middle school. We had a middle school that, at the point that we presented the information, they had not taken very many. But our high schools, all of our programs take lots of field trips. Actually, we get a lot of compliments from the state and have had to do presentations because we're one of the groups, one of the 21st Century sites that's always taking field trips. We're always taking our kids somewhere and giving them that exposure. So, yeah.
Yeah, I know y'all have even gone out of state, because I saw a Newton County School System bus in Selma, Alabama, actually, when I was down there.
Yeah. Our high schools have done a lot of college visits, and I'm really pleased about that. This summer, we did a lot of, at least, all three of our high schools took at least three college visits this summer.
Yeah.
Great. No? Anybody else? Thank you. We have no old business. We'll move to new business. Item A, Ms. Thomas?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached 180-day student calendar and 190-day teacher calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. Background, all employees, parents, and community members in the district were given an opportunity to participate in an online survey allowing for review and voting of three options for the 2019-2020 school calendar. Each calendar option reflects 190 teacher days and 180 student days. The three school calendar options consist of the following. Option 1, the start date is Thursday, August 1st. Option 2, the school's start date was Friday, August 2nd. And option 3, the school's start date would be August 5th, which is a Monday. The Option 1 calendar was the preferred calendar by the majority voting, which includes the following. August 1st is the first day of school, a full week for fall break, a full week for Thanksgiving break, two weeks for the winter holiday break, a mid-winter break, that is three days, and it wraps around the weekend. So it includes Friday, Monday, which is President's Day, and Tuesday, and a week for spring break. The 2019-2020 school calendar Option 1 is attached for your review. This board item is aligned to two of our strategic goals, which are the Student Achievement and Success Goal, as well as the Culture, Climate, and Communication Goal. And this concludes Board Item A.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Having none, we'll move to Item B.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the projectors needed by the school system be purchased from Howard Technology Solutions of Laurel, Mississippi. As part of an ongoing evaluation process, the Technology Department has identified the need to replace projectors as they near the end of their serviceable lifespan. The selected, the view signing projectors provide flexibility to work with existing permitting and active boards and use throughout the school system. The technology will be purchased from Howard Technology Solutions. The school system will utilize contract managed by the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, a national government purchasing cooperative to purchase the equipment. The cost includes shipping, are delineated in the table below. The quantity of 72 projectors. Thus, the total contract value is $38,661.10. This cost will be paid for, budgeted FY19 general funds, and it hits strategic goal areas 1 and 4, which are Student Achievement and Success, and Organizational and Operational Effectiveness.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
I just had a quick question. Is it, is this including installation, or does not include installation?
Not include installation. We'll be installing these with existing staff.
Okay.
Any other questions? Having none, we'll move on. Item C?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board. Item C, before you tonight, the superintendent recommends the approval of the use of gymnasiums at select schools by the Newton County Recreation Commission for recreational basketball. The Newton County Recreation Commission has requested to use the gymnasiums at select schools for recreational basketball. The NRCRC is recognized as a school system partner and is thereby exempt from paying fees for the use of facilities. Principals at each of the schools have approved the request. The school's dates and times are provided in the table below.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. We'll move to Item D.
All right, Item D. The superintendent recommends that identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per Board Policy DO.
Thank you. Any discussions or questions? Having none, we'll move to Item E.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item E. The superintendent recommends approval of the personnel items as outlined in executive session.
I need a motion to approve the items on the Item E.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Any other matters of interest? Ms. Coggins?
I would just like to say thank you to the community, as well as all our school system employees and our students who've come out and showed support for Officer Cooper over the past few weeks, and Ms. Cooper, who is a teacher in our school system. I know that the prayers have been appreciated, and I hope we will continue to show them our support.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Bailey? Ms. Baker?
No, Abigail said it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fier?
Just also to, to keep the family of William Hood, Eastside Senior, in your, in your thoughts and prayers, family and friends, as they go through a really difficult time as well. So I think we really do a good job trying to take care of our family. And when you're a student in our school system, you're part of the family. So just keep them in your thoughts.
No other concerns? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.